Okay. Good evening. Welcome to the Thursday, September 11th, 2025, Marlington Local School District Board of Education Meeting. We stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
When today being September 11th, I'd like to take a moment of silence. I want to read, it was just a simple post that I saw someone put on Facebook, and I just lost it. "We were broken and afraid, a nation shaken beyond belief. Remember all whose lives were changed that day. Remember the love, support, and patriotism that followed." And I would say in light of yesterday's circumstances too, I would just like to take a moment to remember and honor those who have died, just living their lives in freedom. Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Josh Hagan?
Here.
Karen Humphreys?
Here.
Kathy Krupko?
Here.
Mark Ryan?
Here.
Jonathan Swift?
In vacation. Mr. Foss?
Lord, we thank you that we can be here again this evening. We ask for your blessing to continue on this school district, for your protection to remain upon the students and staff here, that it would indeed be a blessing to our community, all the families that live here too. In Jesus's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Reading of the mission statement, Mr. Ryan?
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. Additions or corrections? Are there any additions or corrections? Adoption of the meeting agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the following agenda for tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphreys?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
OSBA presentation, Mrs. Krupko?
There is a property tax reform work group in the state of Ohio. The Governor's Property Tax Reform Work Group has been meeting weekly throughout August on Thursdays at 2:00 PM in the Riff Center. This week, the work group heard invited testimony from the Fair School Funding Work Group, which presented several school funding topics, including the shift of local taxes to residential property owners, reduction in the average state share percentages, and the mechanics of the state funding formula. Public comments to the work group can be sent through the Governor's contact portal. We still have time to nominate a student program for the OSBA Student Achievement Fair. And can we send an announcement out to staff if there's an art group or any group that would like to participate in that so we can nominate?
Send it tomorrow.
Thank you. We do have a letter from the new executive, Chief Executive Officer of the OSBA, Tom Hostler. Dear OSBA members, I'm honored to join the Ohio School Boards Association as your new Chief Executive Officer. For the past 25 years, I've had the privilege of leading school districts, including the last 18, as Superintendent of Perrysburg Exempted Village Schools in Northwest Ohio. I've seen the difference that dedicated school board members make in the lives of students and communities. Your work has never been more important, and I want to ensure OSBA remains a trusted partner, providing resources, training, and advocacy that meet your needs. Thank you for the work you do each day for Ohio students. I look forward to meeting you, learning from you, and serving alongside you. There has been some post-pandemic student achievement levels being tested, and what they have found is nationwide, students are still lacking in academic achievement. A report was created by Curriculum Associates, which is a firm for classroom testing and curriculum, and they collected data from millions of K through 8 students in subjects of math and reading. October will be National Bullying Prevention Month. It's a great time to make sure your district staff has facts on bullying, how bullying can affect kids, and how educators can intervene. And we still have time to submit media honor roll nominees. It's to celebrate the best in local education coverage by naming a journalist or media outlet to OSBA's media honor roll. And I would like to suggest, goodness and time tight, that we add Straggett Media to that honor roll on behalf of Marlington.
We already, we already have. We will add that with, we typically are, try to add in there the Hartville News, and then we will, that will be in addition to that.
Perfect. That's it.
Thank you. Superintendent's update.
Okay, good evening. Make sure everybody a nice evening. The weather's just been fantastic. Thanks for coming out. Today, this is September 11th, 2025. Again, I'm going to stick with, you know, our theme is every minute, every moment, every memory. We really push for that with our, with our staff and our kids to really take advantage of those times we're with children and what we do, so that will not change throughout my tenure here. We're going to talk about, again, reasons to celebrate. As I said last month, I'm going to get a little bit in each month, a little bit about the Secure Data Center and what that is. It kind of gives you just some different data points, and as they update it, as we'll go, but that comes directly from the Department of Educational Workforce. It's the only way you can get into it is actually having an OHID and being able to go in this. There's a public and a non-public side. It gets our, you know, our data that comes directly from EMIS, again, climate and culture, and just kind of where we're heading in the next few weeks. Lot to celebrate right now. So we had the Stark County Fair. So I did get the opportunity to get over to the fair. I did get to see some of the animals, some of the kids. We got to see our wonderful band show. So we did, if you didn't see, we put a parent square out. We asked for parents to submit photos about, you know, a little bit about their kids that we will share through our social media posts in the next few months, but I wanted to give you just a little quick, two-minute snippet of this. Again, I just, that was a very quick snap, very quick snapshot of our kids, so we're going to, as, you know, these parents put in pictures, they put names and kind of maybe places they got, or what they did when they showed their animals, or what they did. So as our social media posts, we'll slowly start releasing those out, but I just want to kind of give you guys a snapshot of, you know, we just got an amazing group of K through 12 kids that did a very nice job at the fair, and they had great weather this year. I mean, it was not overly hot, overly humid, very little rain, so it was, it worked out really well. Okay, next was just this past week here on, you know, I lose track of days. I want to say yesterday.
Yeah.
Was it yesterday? Yeah. So as you know, years ago, so it would have been four years ago, Renee Kaylee really worked hard when I came on. So I was probably four weeks on the job and writing a grant based on the data that we had from our youth science that we do. One of the specific needs that was in this area was culinary. And it was one of those where we weren't quite comfortable at the time with the amount where we were at financially. We were, you know, the deficit spending was huge. We had a massive amount of teachers leaving through attrition or retirements, and that was the year, if you remember, we cut about 14 staff through that thing. So we kind of made the decision through our compact that we were going to hand the grant off to Alliance, even though it still serves both of us. They submitted it, made some tweaks to it, obviously, because it's a different layout, different setup to where it was. They did get the grant, which we did, which is basically a Marlington Alliance-Salem grant in our compact to build that $3.4 million project. So we have right there in the center is, we, those are all Marlington kids, so this is the first year of it. So there's a total of 17 kids, five of which, that's the chef there with them, is Marlington students, is part of the Culinary Program. We were obviously there for the ribbon cutting yesterday, and just give you a little, you know, just a picture of the kids. And then the group on the left was all the kids that are in the, in the, in the program for its, you know, initiation. And then obviously, we had some inside pics, and they gave a tour. So this will benefit both Marlington Alliance tremendously, obviously Salem too, but it's a little bit farther on that aspect for them to come in for that. But we, you know, with the way Alliance and Marlington operates within our compact, we have buses that go back and forth all day long. So we're very excited to see this take off, and we're going to expand on the program with our horticulture program, with some green things with that. So those are things that are coming in the future. So we're just kind of, so Renee was very excited. I was very excited. Mr. Farrell was very excited, so we were there as part of that. That's what I, I think I sent that to you guys in the Friday update, you know, that out there. So just give you an idea. So it's good things moving there. That gives us 15 total, I think, in our, for career or CTE on that aspect. The band, you know, I always try to highlight the band. It's, it's, the amount of work that they put in throughout the summers is amazing. So I just kind of put some pictures in here, because I don't know if you know how much they get together. So this is, you know, they go to, they do go to band camp, and they come out of camp with different, at least three different shows, sometimes two shows, maybe three. You know, it could be like a football show, then their main show that they work towards, towards the year, but they do have a good time. So there's a few pictures from them at camp. Then obviously, they were at the Stark County Fair. You know, so I guess, you know, some pics there. And then they've been in our football games. And then tomorrow night, if you're here for Community Night, obviously, I think they will be, they usually about week four, I could be wrong. I don't want to speak for Mr. Penegras, but this is the time where they'll start at halftime showing. They won't use their football show. They'll go into more of their state show. So you'll get to see a little bit more when it comes to what they plan on doing there. Am I right, Josh? Am I, I think? Am I right on that? Okay. All right, moving on. So I said I was talking about the Secure Data Center. So the Secure Data Center, I'm just giving like different snapshots that I'll do each month. So Ben, you got to scroll out a little bit more, make it a little smaller for a second, then you can get bigger. So in the Secure Data Center, this all comes from our EMIS. This is actual data, live data that changes. So we're still haven't got the finalized data, which is usually about next month, which is September 15th, when the report cards come out. October 1st is when we do a lot of accounts and things. So like Josh, you asked last month about bus. That's October 1st when we get the hard counts. That's why I'm waiting here. I would have, you know, so next month I'll have you that about butts and seats and bus and what we do. But one of our report card measures is chronic absenteeism, all right? Chronic absenteeism by definition is basically 10%, you can't miss 10% of your school year regardless of anything. Vacation, medical, excused or unexcused. At the end of the day, the state says, if you miss more than 10% of school, we have a problem. We got to start working with you as a family. They don't really matter if, what it is. There's no reason. That's their, that's the law. That's not Marlington's. That's the law. So you can see there in 2022, our chronic absenteeism was roughly around 26%. 2023, because I'm trying to put basically where I, you know, I kind of look at where I was at on that. 2023, it's dropped to 20%. Our building principals have worked hard. 2024, we're at 21%. This past year, we're down to 14%. Okay, so it's, it just goes to show when you invest, we've spent a lot of time, and Renee has, with, in our administrators and our teachers, have spent a great deal of time to make sure that kids want to be at school. Now, obviously, it's a, you know, the elementary is where we, we have done a really good job at the elementary level, and I'm going to show that. And our middle school level and our high school level. So if I go down, then you can go by school. So this is Lexington Elementary. Gives you a little idea there of, you know, where we were at, down to 12%, 8% a year, go to 11%. I mean, just remarkable for a building that is, you know, has typically struggled getting, you know, getting kids to school. How well Mrs. Weber and that team has done to really get kids to be there. If you look at Marlboro, you got 12, 13, 7% last year. Okay, you know, these are good for our report card measure. It's good data to have when we talk about it, because it is something that, you know, affects kids. They need to be in school. Here's Washington, again, 22, 13, 14, 11%. Excellent. Our middle school, good, 21, 18, 14, 14. Now, you get middle school, high school, you know, kids get a little, as you guys, you know, you have middle school and high school kids. They just, they don't get quite as excited about school. High school's a little harder, because we got to be very careful how we code them, because if they're in CCP, we got to make sure they're coded right. These are things that took us a while to figure out. So some of our numbers earlier in high school were high. Like the 23, 24 school year was not because we had 36 kids absent. It was because we coded them wrong in EMIS. You know, so those are just things that we had to catch when we met with other high school administrators and we went with other attendance officers. You know, but you can't change it. Once it's in there and it's in the past, that's kind of the direction of what it is. But you can see, went from 36% till we know that it's right, which is at 19%. All good stuff, but that's just one aspect of the Secure Data Center. When I say it's a huge amount of data, I just want to give, I'm going to give different snapshots every month. The next snapshot, you got to scroll out there, Ben, student enrollment. Okay, so as I promised, when we start the school year, I started it last year late, that I put enrollment figures in here, so those papers are going to grow for you. So you'll see in your, in your packet, you got last June at the end, enrollment figures, which is butts and seats, all right, for us. And then obviously butts and seats, and, and you'll see our most recent one in September. Now, the Secure Data Center may not be exactly what we match, because we do have transient population in and out. There's only snapshots in time when they do that, okay? So, you know, you kind of can get an idea, but it does give you trend data. That's the other thing I like about the Secure Data Center is it gives you trend data. You can't hide from it. All right, you can only show, you know, what it is. So, you know, so if you look at, and I'll give you an example, you look at Marlboro, you know, you look at 21, 22, 23, 24, 25. But if you look in your packet at our most recent September enrollment, I would say Marlboro is what, at the end across? 231, you know, because that's 25, 26 school year. Okay. You know, if, so Lexington, you go across. You'll see Lexington shrinking, but there's a reason why Lexington's shrinking. It's because since I have taken foot, we have closed the doors to open enrollment at Lexington. And the reason why is because we were trying to keep our teaching staff at 2, 2, and 2 across the board. Lexington was always the outlier that had three classrooms of this, two classrooms of this, and at the end of the day, the way we're under the funding guarantee, adding more students right now does not give us more money, so why are we continuing to let students in? Like I've talked about this. We have to be very strategic about letting students in. So it's not because Lexington's trending down. It's because we're keeping the doors much tighter. Washington is staying steady, up, down. It's actually probably higher than that. The high school is going to go down, because our class sizes are smaller. We're starting to catch up. Okay, that's just, that's just the nature of our normal class sizes. We're not 170, 166 kids anymore. We're averaging class sizes between 135 and 140 by the time we get there. That is going to trend until it's going, it's settling itself. It's just finally getting to the, the settlement. And the middle schools just kind of, it just depends on the class. So when I look at June enrollment and this September enrollment, when I actually physically look, you know, at the, at the difference between the two, I think the, the elementary, if my mind can be wrong, if you looked at the two and did your own math, I think we're up two overall this year as a whole. Middle school, we're up two. High school, we're down 19. You do the offset. I think we're a total of down 15 kids from when we ended the school year to where we're at at the end of Sept, or through September enrollment. Okay, so that's, it's, and that's not necessarily a bad thing, because our high, some of our high school classes were a little larger, and we're, and we're just kind of settling into this now where Marlington is, where Stark County is. You know, they're just not having as many kids. So that's just, this trend data will continue to grow once more data comes, but I just wanted to give you that as an example when we're talking about students. Oop, wrong button. Okay, educators. So this is other thing, you know, so this will, after September 15th, this will become more in the public side on that end. This is like just 24, 25, so, you know, teachers are your FTEs is what they're looking at, you know. So you can look at our fine arts teachers, 3.4, career tech, 5.8, gen ed, 82.4, gifted one, music, 5.2, PE, special education. FTEs, student support side, these are ones that really aren't with kids. The parapros, the 13.7, those are typically classified, so they don't really go as FTEs. But your school psychologists do, your speech paths and your school counselors are typical FTEs, but they don't see kids. So that's how the Department of Education. Now, they'll lump them all together in a number, but they, they separate student support from teachers, because, and I talked about this earlier, you know, you can have one lump sum of FTEs, but at the end of the day, your student support staff does not technically have a block of kids. You know, so, but this is kind of from the 24, 25 angle. This is the data that they have, you know, for our, for our current district. So they, and then you can go back and look at trend data, where your teachers are and so forth. You know, you can endlessly, like I'm going to demonstrate next month through this Department of Education and workforce. I mean, this is all here. I'm going to have them show that, you know, if I say that I've cut 34 staff, it'll show directly against the FTEs how close that is to what our general FTEs are.
This is people on our payroll, not people that we contract out to?
Correct.
Okay.
So you still have, so the best, the, one of the best examples I can give you is we do have a school nurse. You guys do a contract. You approve the school nurse. Okay, so that is a contracted service that we pay, but that doesn't come off of, yes, we pay it out of our payroll, but it's not part of a general hire that we do. SROs are not in there. We have two school sites, you know, but we have, we have contracted out the other one, because we don't even have one. So there's a, you know, there's, and those are not anything that's out of the normal. Our physical and occupational therapists, obviously, we have a multitude of them, but that depends on each individual kid, and they're, they're all like maybe 20 minutes here, an hour here, twice a week. You know, it just depends on what the student's individual education plan is, when they would see a physical occupational therapist. Our district is not big enough to employ one physical or occupational therapist due to the cost. And we're too large to be able to stretch it out. So like the, that's why we do it through the ESC. So they may have, we may have three physical therapists here in one day, but that's because there are ones at Washington, ones at Marlboro, ones at Lexington, but they're only there for an hour. But they can't meet those needs all in the same confines of the week based on individual schedules. So, but as you said, if you have questions, like I said, you know, if people do, please reach out to me. I mean, I can, this data is going to come a lot more clear. It's just when we sit down as an admin team, we use the Secure Data Center, because that's true data. From, you know, it comes right out of OD, or from the Department of Education. Again, I, I can't stress enough that the reason why our chronic absenteeism go down is because our climate and culture. The reason why we have very limited staff turnover besides retirement is because of our climate and culture. It's because what this board has done. It's because of what our principals and admin has done. It's because of what our community embraces. It's just, it's a good place to work. So these are things that I, we kind of set forth on a yearly basis. And then obviously, now what's coming up, and I guess I didn't put it in next month's meeting. So if you remember last month, I said that Mr. Foss was going to give some finance update, and Mrs. Kaylee was going to give, Renee was going to give some curriculum. Well, I sent you in that Friday update that the, the, due to House Bill 96, the five-year forecast, now a three-year forecast has changed. So that has to happen now in August, in February every year, but because August has passed, they allowed a grace period of letting it happen in October 15th. Is the deadline, so we're going to have to do a work session under finances and works in a board meeting all before that, which kind of works into what we'll talk about the end of the meeting. And then the report card doesn't truly come live or active. It's only preliminary until September 15th, which is, today's only 11th. So Renee's going to be the main speaker next month, talking about what's going on with curriculum in the district and touching base on our report card and how we did from a, you know, the, the multitude of grade, graded measures we have. have. Uh, obviously, our Marlington Post, an October, November addition will be going out, nothing out of the ordinary there for me. Uh, community meetings, I do these every year, uh, just, I sent those to you guys. I'm at Science Hill on September seventeenth at six. Uh, Bob and I are meeting with Aaron Roush, he's basically the school finance guy from the Department of Education in Sept-, on September nineteenth. Uh, this gives Bob and I some conversation about why, how school finance directly affects Marlington and some things that are coming down. For example, diff-, you know, how, how we spend our money, what we have, we were able to send him specific questions and get a one-on-one with him, so this is, this is good for Bob and I. Uh, Marlboro Christian on September thirtieth, uh, obviously, the Minister's Breakfast, you'll be getting the invite for that on October ninth. Uh, First Christian Church on October twenty-second. And the Township Trustee meetings, I typically always hit in September, October, just based on my schedule. Like if I can squeeze in, you know, depending on the night, we don't have a, another thing, then I try to make sure and get out there and just, just say hello, give a brief update of what's going on in the district. So those things are all, all coming within the, the month of October, uh, and I guess September to finish up the month. That's all I have. You got any questions?
That's good, thank you. Public participation, did anyone sign up to speak?
No.
You? No old business, so new business.
Okay, we have, we have one new business, uh, for tonight. Uh, so it is, I recommend the motion to approve the following out-of-state field trip as shown in Exhibit A.
So moved?
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, this is the volleyball team taking a trip to Pittsburgh to watch Pitt play.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Okay, I don't know where my point, but, um, treasurer's agenda, Mr. Foss?
Now, the first item won't be the minutes, but I thought I'd give you a brief update on, uh, one thing I mentioned the last board meeting. Wanted to let the board know that , uh, the audit was completed for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the auditor state reported an unmodified opinion, which means it was a clean audit. And the audit is available in the Marlington Treasurer's webpage, under the community information link, and it's also available online on the Auditor State's website. And I think I mentioned it last meeting, but we've already begun, um, they've already begun working on the FY twenty-five audit, so, still moving. But if you have any questions about that, um, please let me know.
Is that the same report we got in our emails?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, they send it out directly like that. Okay, so back to the agenda here, if there are no questions right now. Um, I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the August fourteenth regular board meeting.
So moved.
Or second?
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
I would like to recommend that the board approve the financial reports for the period ending August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, highlight.
Okay, we finished, uh, the month of August with a total fund balance of eleven million six-hundred-ninety-three thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and sixty-six cents. During the month of August, we, let's see, let me, let me give you a couple balances first here. Uh, the general fund, we finished the month of August with a cash balance of nine million four-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand four-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and sixty-one cents. Permanent Improvement Fund, the balance ended the month at five-hundred-and-forty-four thousand three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and seventy-two cents. And the Capital Projects Fund, seven-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand seven-twenty-seven point eight-zero. We paid during the month of August checks totaling one million one-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-three dollars and eighty-eight cents. The largest one, uh, in there was, was one for the roofing project, which is the second to the last payment that we have for the roof. Any questions about any of the checks, or?
Um, have we heard anything back about the sidewalk at the middle school, Dan? And, because I know that hadn't been paid yet.
No, we have not. Uh, he was getting back to me. I asked for, as I think I put in the update, like a, for that one particular section where you're kinda pulling up that you and I discussed when we were there at Vasco, uh, like a, what the price was for square foot or what they installed, and it just basically options outside of painting, which I said no. Uh, I wanted to know what the cost would be to remove and replace versus what they could, uh, basically take off the bill, you know, and options, and come out and give that. So they said, just give them some time to get back to me. So as soon as they do that, I was gonna share that with you, and then I can share with the board.
Okay.
I also wanted to share how much we've paid so far year-to-date for the roof project since we did both, you know, all the remaining phases to finish it. Uh, we've paid two million four-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand two-hundred-and-forty dollars so far this year. Uh, the balance remaining, based on the estimate, is two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand three-hundred-and-sixty. So we should see that invoiced pretty soon. Good to have that one done.
Do we, do we do like a final walkthrough of the roof or anything, or do they?
So they sign off, so they could, so Team Craft comes in and, and does, does a walkthrough, then the insurance company comes and walk through, and then we actually had Stark County has to come in and do their walkthrough, and they also signed off. From, uh, the Stark County, yeah, so that, that's all, we have all the documentation for all of that, too.
The insurance company does that, is that just for roof projects?
No, that's, well, I don't wanna say, it wasn't Liberty Insurance, it's just, they gotta, we gotta send all that because we have a thirty-year warranty. So through the, uh, the company that, obviously, we bid that out through, they cover, so Team Craft covers like the first year or two if it was something that is up there, but after that, the, we have the thirty-year warranty that covers everything else, very similar to like the middle school.
Yeah.
You know, it was a different company that did that, but they don't come back and fix any issues in the middle school, the warranty comes back and does that. So we've actually had two official walkthroughs, but Stark County was the biggest one, you know, that they come in and sign off.
And I know I brought this up in the past, even before you were superintendent, is we never had any final walkthroughs that I know of for the projects at Marlboro or Lexington and Washington. Is there any way we can get with PlugSmart?
So, we have reached out, obviously, we had a public records request from, from a community member asking for that, that was a, a previous board member that was solely on the project. Um, obviously, we reached out to PlugSmart for punch card receipts and, you know, final walkthroughs that was in part of the contract. A lot of that was, uh, the emails were, you know, we responded and PlugSmart sent us, and obviously, we looked through our old emails prior to me, obviously, like you said. Uh, you know, we found that there was meeting set, you know, with board members and, uh, maintenance and them, but, you know, where, what transpired from that meeting, we, we're still waiting for that because PlugSmart, PlugSmart said they should have documentation of that, they agree. So we've requested it. Um, they said they've been searching for that, and we're still waiting for an answer. So we just kind of, Bob has responded to the public records request with everything that we've gotten from PlugSmart.
Yeah.
You know, but we're still kind of.
I know, I know one, one thing in particular that, you know, some of the units at Marlboro Elementary, and I don't know, I don't think they had the problem at Lexington and Washington because it was, because of supply issues, some of the units they couldn't get with the actual covers, so they fabricated temporary covers for them, and I think there's some in the steps, you know, where the, where you got the steps, the second floor at Marlboro, they've got like fabricated covers on them, but they were supposed to come back, once they could get a hold of the covers for those units, to put the actual covers on them. But I'm pretty sure they still have those temporary fabricated covers on them.
So the, I have no, I mean, even, I've been here four years, that's the first anybody's ever questioned the covers?
Yeah, no, I brought it up before.
I, I have, I don't have any, anything to remember that, because my, and I'm not saying my memory's perfect, but, I mean, I do know that when I came on board, Dr. Mike was still kinda not getting maybe crystal-clear answers, would be fair.
Yeah.
You know, and, uh, so I think, but the main key components, and I'd have to go back and look at his emails that I kind of inherited on there, you know, there was some wiring at Lexington, uh, you know, a stage issue at Lexington, a few other odds and ends, but the way PlugSmart explained it in the contract was, you know, you know, the, the sign-off was for substantial completion, you know, so obviously, there would be some things that needed to be, you know, probably tied up on that end. Um, I have no emails that I, I've said it, like you might have a hundred percent, I'm not saying you didn't, it's just, that was not one, or I would've probably followed up a little bit more.
One of the other things in particular at Marlboro were the line set covers that they have for the units, because they got the lines for the refrigerant, and there were spaces where there was, I don't know if they were, they didn't have enough material, but there were gaps, and, uh, those were things that were supposed to be addressed, but, you know, that was during, you know, COVID and all that mess. I know that, you know, was part of it, but.
I mean, Marlboro's units are all solid. The only one that we've really had an issue with that I've been aware of, I've been told by Al's been the one in the office that was remedied probably a year, year and a half ago, where they went, they went for quite a few times where we couldn't figure out the code. You know, I mean, RT Hampton was the installer that PlugSmart uses as a subcontractor, and now RT Hampton was, uh, is no longer, you know, they, they, they weren't LG certified, by the way, but that was a question I had with PlugSmart, because you're installing LG materials and you don't have an LG certification, which I thought was interesting. Uh, so we've been kind of dealing with these units above our things in all buildings, uh, um, for quite some time, high school being probably some of our biggest issues, you know, of, uh, not working properly or, you know, leaks or things between the hoses and the gaskets. But Marlboro's been one that I think's been fairly consistent, and they also still have a few of the old rooftop units, you know, that have, you know, that are still a little bit on the larger side, you know, that aren't the smaller units. And, uh, Washington's, I think they've had two that were like, kind of like really, basically, I wanna say went out of warranty that had to be completely replaced, you know, from that, but, uh, they're holding their own right now, but, I mean, I can follow up on those things, I just.
Yeah, I, I just think it'd be nice to actually have, you know, them come through and do the final walkthrough that was part of the contract.
Well, they're, they're not called PlugSmart anymore, they're called Amaresco?
Yep.
I think, am I correct?
That's correct, what, what's it called?
Amaresco, so, but I still am able to reach out to Will, uh, that's who I, that's, that's who I spoke to. I think he was the original project manager before his new position of what, what he does. So he was the one I spoke to when the public records request came in for punch cards and/or, you know, final substantial completion status, sign off and so forth, which, um, was in their contract with us back when this was, uh, you know, set up originally in the contract when Joe Knoll was here with the, with the previous board, so.
For Marlboro, at least?
No, it was all three.
All three Joe was here?
Yes, it was.
No.
So that was when.
Dr. Mike was superintendent when Washington and Lexington.
He inherited that, ish, he inherited those projects over that.
He was superintendent, Joe, Joe might've been here.
In hindsight, it doesn't really matter to me. At the end of the day, we're trying to answer the request and make sure that, you know, if there was something that was supposedly tied into a contract that the boards approved from a previous superintendent, that it was completed, you know, it was just, you know, outside of what I walked into, yes, I, I feel confident in what we've done so far as a board, when I've been here, but, and if there's something that you want me to look into from that, yeah, but we have, I could ask Will again to.
Yeah, I just, I just like, you know, those things to be tied up, you know, like those covers on those units. And, you know, it's just something that, it sounds like between different, you know, administrators and COVID and everything, some things fell through the cracks that need resolved.
Maybe, I mean, we've had work sessions, I could, that's not something that's ever been discussed in any of our work sessions, so, um, I'll be happy to look into that, that's not an issue, pretty thorough, so you could, uh, not a problem.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Next item is to recommend that the board approve the revenue and budget revisions.
So moved?
Second.
The revisions I'm, I'm asking for with this, um, I'll read each of them, there's three really. Uh, the first is for the Permanent Improvement Fund to add a hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars to cover the purchase of a school bus out of the Permanent Improvement Fund. And then also to add a hundred-and-sixteen thousand one-hundred-and-fifty dollars to the Termination Benefits Fund, to, uh, cover the retirement payouts this fall, and also, um, an estimate of seventy-five thousand in, uh, the incentives that'll be paid in the spring. And then, uh, just a heads up, too, as we approach the end of the year, I'll be asking for another transfer into that fund to cover, to bring it up to a hundred, to bring it up to a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, have that much in there. The last item is, um, for Fund Five-Five-One, which is a Title III grant. That's just one thousand two-hundred-and-eighty-nine dollars eighty-eight cents, so that we have enough to, um, enough budget there to cover what they're giving us for that grant.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Would like to recommend that the board approve, uh, the following fund-to-fund transfer. Uh, one hundred-and-sixteen thousand one-hundred-and-fifty dollars from the General Fund to the Employee Severance Fund.
So moved?
Second.
So this is really a follow-up to the one budget revision I mentioned, it's to, um, actually transfer the cash to that O-three-five fund so that we can make those payments.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Donations. I would like to recommend that the board approve the following donations. The Joe Farrell Memorial Foundation from Tony Farrell, seven thousand dollars to the Joe Farrell Memorial Fund, and one hundred dollars from Bill Coe in memory of Frank Burkey, a longtime supporter of Marlington's program, for any needs of the Duke's softball program.
So moved?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krepko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And thank you for those donations. Personnel.
Personnel, all right. As usual, I would, uh, like to consent personnel, so I, uh, I will go through the highlights of all personnel there. Okay? We have, uh, we have one certified resignation, uh, that was a tutor that never started the school year, she ended up getting a full-time job in another school district. We have one classified resignation, that's a bus driver, uh, mid-year. We have a certified staff hire, that's actually the tutor that did start on time, that we were able to hire for the one that, uh, had to leave. We have our typical classified hires, just to fill in any, uh, missing blanks or anything to start the school year, from custodial to bus to what we need there, aides. Uh, we have sub-hires from the certified and classified side, uh, supplementals we're still trying to fill. We have one leave request right now for a, uh, for a staff member. We have an amended retirement date, just a little bit shorter based on what the, uh, SIRS, uh, uh, We have an amended retirement date, just a little bit shorter based on what the SIRS told them to retire, the retirement people. We have a few supplemental pay corrections, and then we have a part-time tutor hire. We could actually do full-time, but we could not find a qualified full-time one, so the part-time one will be perfect.
Motion?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Okay, for upcoming events, obviously tomorrow, I send it out, it's Community Day, so we are home against Louisville tomorrow. Louisville is 3-0, we are 2-1. I expect that to be, you know, hopefully a really great game. We also have Hall of Fame nights, we have our Hall of Fame of Excellence inductees. I sent those to, that out and to you guys, so board, you're obviously invited, so if you can make that, that'd be great. We have our Community Day from 4:30 to 6:30, so that'll be going on. The band does come and perform for that, too, as part of the Community Day, plus face painting, plus hayrides and the normal, the hot dogs. And add that on top, that the FFA asks if they could do their hog roast tomorrow night also. So you have, like I said, pulled pork sandwiches, fresh cut fries, you name it. So, and the weather looks to be perfect, so we're hoping for, you know, a really nice turnout. That Community Day, we're on our 14th one, so it's kind of grown every year specifically. It seems to be in the last three to four years, we're really getting a, you know, a really nice turnout for that night. So if you guys can make it out, that would be great. Athletically, I just will continue to send those to you, you know, through Friday, and I think you also have the Google Doc that's updated, but I'll send that to you. I know you're going to ask, you're going to go in the next Board of Education meeting date, which is, is the standard October 9th date. I am going to request that we do a work session on October 8th, the day before. I just would hope that a time would work for all of you because with the department and House Bill 96 passing, October 15th is now the deadline to submit the five-year forecast. So I know we typically spend a lot of time in, you know, November is, was our normal window in May. The new window this year is going to be October and February. And it's no longer a five-year forecast, it's technically a three-year forecast. So Bob will kind of, and he talked to Ryan Gazoni, and that's the only real date. He kind of was in the same crunch, this email came out and.
Is Ryan changing the name of his business?
He could, he probably should, that's a good call. If you get a three-year forecast, if it's a five, forecast five, it could be forecast three.
He is available at 6:00 PM on October 8th.
It's the 6:00 PM work on the 8th for you guys.
On the 8th, does that work for everyone?
I'm okay with that.
October 8th, 6:00 PM, the Wednesday.
Then we would have the board meeting on?
The night.
On the 9th.
I have boys soccer records.
Yeah, that's our question.
So we have, for some reason, boys senior soccer night was scheduled for October 9th also. I have not heard if that has changed, so I'm going to go with that's the same thing that I have on my calendar. So the question to the board is this, we're not changing our general meeting date. Are you willing to change the time to 7:00 PM instead of 6:00? You could, we could do senior night at 6:30 over at the soccer field and then kind of hustle across the street and start our board meeting at 7:00. Or we can just not worry about it, they, you know, we can't control the schedule, we just hold at 6 o'clock. Either way is fine with me. It's just really something, if you guys, based on your guys' time schedule, how that, how that works in for you guys.
Be okay with 7:00. The soccer group has done a lot for the school.
Josh?
Either way is fine with me.
Either way.
Either way.
Can you do 7:00? So can you mark?
7:00, okay, so. 7:00 PM rather than 6:00, okay.
Speaking of the soccer teams, who do you contact to get the soccer cash cards? For fundraising cards?
Mr. Eric Siders or me, and I can get you something. How many need?
Good to know.
I can take care of that after the meeting.
Those are a really good deal.
Yep.
They're only five bucks.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Yep, we make sure we have everything right for dates.
October 8th at 6:00 PM.
For the work session?
For the work session, okay.
October 9th at 7:00 PM for the regular meeting.
Very good.
Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved? Second.
Everybody wants to stay? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Thank you, and good night.